Good evening, welcome to the February twentieth meeting of the Newmarket Town Council. I'll just mention that Councilor Weinstein is going to be a few minutes late tonight, but we'll begin now with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as usual, we will begin with a public forum with comments limited to five minutes per person.
Here to talk about the weed control program being used by the town. I've heard that the work is handled by a third party. Someone else said that the Department of Public Works is responsible. I've asked several people and haven't really gotten any answers yet. I want to know what the actual story is. I want to know who does the work? Is it paid for with taxpayer money? What is used to control the weeds? Is it a glyphosate-based herbicide or is it something else? Are the persons doing the spraying licensed to do so? If the product used is labeled as weed killer, shouldn't area residents be notified? Do you all, do you have all sidewalk areas sprayed to control for weeds? Is the downtown area sprayed, including by the river, around the schools? Is spraying for weeds the most effective use of taxpayer money, especially if what's used is a potential carcinogen? There are safer alternatives. One of the great things, one of the things that's so great about Newmarket is how you can walk to almost everywhere you might need to go. I frequently walk my dog around town, pick up after her, and we try to be respectful of people's property. I'm concerned that come the warmer weather, some of the areas where we walk could have her encounter herbicide on her feet, on her fur, all of which could be avoided if, one, spraying weren't done in the first place; two, if signs were put up saying that spraying had been done; or three, notification went out in the e-newsletter. People need to know if this is being done and how safe is it. I say this last point in particular, people need to know if this is being done and with what, because I taught a foraging workshop last fall at the library, part of the time being spent outside with people taking the workshop, looking for plants that are edible on the library grounds, and there are a few. And at that time, I was unaware that spraying had been done around the library grounds. I guess we lucked out, no one got sick, but I wouldn't have taken anyone there had I known about the spraying program. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Jessica Waters, I live at 147 Main Street, number two, in Newmarket. First, I wanted to say that I was heartened by the exchange between members of the Alliance for Newmarket Citizen and Ecosystem Rights, ANSER, and the Town Council at the last meeting, as well as the subsequent email exchange. To me, that exchange embodies what it means to live in a representational democracy. There are only seven council seats for the nine thousand people in Newmarket, most of whom are unable, for various reasons, to actually run for those seats anyways. To sit on the council is a tremendous responsibility and one I thank you for taking on. I understand that the system only works if you get plenty of feedback from the community whose interests you represent. So I wanted to thank the council for my ongoing invitation to speak and your acceptance of the moral responsibility to listen to members of the community, even the feisty ones. Secondly, I wanted to state that I am strongly against the use of glyphosate for weed control in town for reasons that have been stated more eloquently by Joan and others. However, I thought it was only fair that if I was unhappy about that, that I should do some of the lead-like work to find out what the alternatives are. So I spent my day today playing phone tag with the public works departments of various neighboring towns, and what I found out was as follows. One, Dover Public Works Department informed me that they are switching to a chemical-free, saturated steam-based weed solution this year. Two, Durham Public Works stated that they also do not use chemical pesticides or herbicides for weed control, although the person I spoke to was not sure what they used as an alternative. Three, the town of Portsmouth has previously used glyphosate but is currently seeking an alternative organic option for this coming year, which includes looking at steam-based options as well. I also spoke with Municipal Pest Management, which is the contractor that sprays for weeds in both Portsmouth and Newmarket, as well as numerous other towns in the area. They agreed to provide information on the non-toxic alternatives currently being pursued by Portsmouth. I'm waiting to hear back on that. I also found out that in Summersworth, where Municipal Pest Management is also contracted for weed control, they did a simultaneous test of glyphosate on some streets and an organic alternative on others to test what the effectiveness is. So basically, what I'm trying to say is that we're not talking about making this change in a vacuum. Many, if not most, of the towns in the area are already moving away from using glyphosate because of the many environmental and safety concerns around the product. With only a few phone calls, I was able to find out that cost-effective glyphosate-free solutions do exist, and our neighbors are already implementing them. I'm going to continue trying to compile information on non-toxic glyphosate alternatives, which I hope to be able to share with the council soon. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stacy Mazur, I live at 5 Church Street, and I'm here also today to talk about the use of glyphosate for weed control in our sidewalks. I sent an email, you've all received it, and I appreciate the responses I did get in answering some of the questions I had. Just in brief, I think before the summer starts, we should definitely look at alternatives for non-toxic solutions. We should definitely be urging DPW to look at other options, and I think it was a request for funding proposal that has to be done to see if it's within the budget to do. Already stated better than I about the growing concerns about the risk to humans and definitely already the risk that we know that there is to the environment. For me personally, I believe that the use of chemical herbicides should be a very careful, selective use. They should only be used in the event of needing to possibly treat invasive species that have heavily infested an area, and that's after other mechanical and organic uses have been explored. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Circa Donwood, I live at 351 Wally Falls Road, and I'm here to suggest and urge the Town Council to consider the use of alternatives to glyphosate in weed control in the town. We don't know conclusively that glyphosate is a carcinogen, but certainly there are plenty of concerns out there, concerns strong enough to motivate a United States court to direct compensation for harm to be paid by Monsanto to a farmer in our country based on the exposure to glyphosate. Now, these are larger quantities because he was using it in a farming environment, but it shows to me that we need to be concerned that glyphosate has carcinogenic properties. And since there are alternatives that we can use, as was so perfectly and wonderfully researched by a previous speaker, thank you very much, by the way, we should simply not use it. Since there are alternatives, why run the risk? Even if we don't know conclusively, it's just harm avoidance rather than harm reduction later on. So I would urge that you, on behalf of the community, on behalf of the citizens of this beautiful town, direct the Department of Public Works, or however, whatever avenue you want to choose, to find an alternative and to implement it. And since the other towns in the area are already doing that, there must be plenty of research already done that we can benefit from as a town. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Andrew DeMael, I live at 147 Main Street, apartment two, in Newmarket. I would like to invite the council for the fourth time to adopt the resolution drafted by ANSER, the Alliance for Newmarket Citizen and Ecosystem Rights, in support of the New Hampshire Community Rights Amendment, CACR eight, prime sponsored by Newmarket representative Ellen Reed. You all have copies of this resolution in your email, courtesy of Monica Cristofoli. I'll be sending a copy tonight, or rather, re-sending a copy in case it got lost in your inbox. I understand that happens sometimes. And the version you've been presented with includes a watermark in the event that you want to make changes to it before adopting it. CACR eight is going into hearing on March sixth. We are hoping to see a vote on whether or not to adopt the resolution in time for the hearing on the related amendment, and are interested to see if it will be publicly addressed at tonight's meeting. Members of ANSER and citizens of Newmarket want to know, will any of you bring forth this resolution to the full council for adoption and consideration? Thank you.
I'm a little nervous, I don't speak in public that often. So I'm just going to read this off my road writing, but my name is Jamie Duggan. I actually don't currently live in Newmarket.
Hold on, Mr. Chair, the council rules are specific that you have to be a resident of Newmarket to speak, unless the council suspends its rules?
I'd like to move to suspend the rule to allow her to speak.
No one opposed?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Appreciate that. So I live right down the road on 152 in Lee, New Hampshire, where my partner and I and our son own and operate Dog Rose Farm. I just have a brief comment to you based on the fact until last year. I previously lived in Newmarket since 2004. I'm one of the managers of the Stone Church Music Club in Newmarket for five years. I also currently run and manage the Newmarket Farmers Market. I truly love this community very much. I'm here tonight to ask you to take glyphosate out of Newmarket's equation. As an organic farmer, I understand the dangers of Roundup, also known as glyphosate, sprayed on our crops. I would never dream of feeding my son, our CSA shareholders, or our market customers in community food that has been sprayed with anything in the family of glyphosate chemicals. Having it sprayed on Newmarket's town sidewalks does not sit well with what our small town is about, welcoming people as a safe and vibrant community that boasts a farmers' market featuring organic food. Just a few weeks ago, the Town, the Newmarket Town people came to you on the issue of repairing the dam and spoke to you how, no, sorry. They know how people are coming up from Massachusetts and beyond to visit the Newmarket with its sweet Main Street and scenic dam and riverfront. I venture to guess that the polls taken of these visitors would register that they would like the sidewalks to be well-kept but prefer not to walk down them some weekend morning just hours after they've been sprayed. I understand that none of you counselors are responsible for the decisions that glyphosate be used. Obviously, no one is blaming you, but people are asking you to do something about it. Currently, regulations still say that glyphosate is safe, but court proceedings are ruling in favor of damages against glyphosate manufacturers for causing cancer from long-term time exposure, and cancer coalitions are flagging the pesticide as concerning. Maybe you think switching herbicide control won't make the town much safer or better, but take action for the sake then and for the principle of the thing. There are safer alternatives, at least one of which I heard was already proposed to you at your last meeting. It's a no-brainer, have your energy and environmental committee look into options. Do you write by people you serve in this town? So many people love living in it and want to visit it. Thank you.
My name's Sean Kiper, 170 Main Street. I just wanted to say that I'm running for Town Council, so write me in. Voting is March 12th, and there's a meet the candidates day in March, which I will be at if anyone has any questions for me then. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, we will close the public forum at 7:15 and move on to consideration of the minutes of the February sixth Town Council meeting. Could I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And any corrections or changes?
Small. So, starting line 338, I think it's actually on 339. Peer pressure is huge and things happen, and it looks like it's in the past tense. Make that. And then there was another part, let me just find it. Brain, okay, line 342, the brain's development that was not known before.
Just a correction to Joan's last name spelling.
Seeing no others, please call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Cass.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council YC.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Town Administrator report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on my report is, as you may have heard, the school district has had discussions on the shared services as related to finances. The superintendent indicated that she's concerned with the workload is too high for the departments and that the director, and that we may, each may need our own directors. A working group of the council chair, vice chair, school board chair, the superintendent and I met to discuss the issue. We're all in agreement that we should try to work together to make this project a success. I am right now getting a proposal from Municipal Resources, Inc., to analyze the departments and to highlight any changes that may need to be done to make this successful before we disband the agreement. Been in communication with the CEO of MRI and they're writing up the proposal. With the adoption of the...
Could I, I think it'd be a good time to mention, too, that we have at least tentatively agreed on a date for a joint Town Council School Board meeting, right? Just so people kind of are aware of that date.
I don't have it in front of me, I apologize.
Do you happen to remember?
If you have it in front of me, I can get it.
All right, well, at least just be aware that...
It's going to be, it's in April, April 11th.
April 11th, okay. Yeah, because it's, and it's consistent with what we discussed the last time we had a joint meeting. People said that they thought April would be a good time to, so that there'd be more time between...
April 10th.
Ten?
Ten.
Okay, thank you.
There'd be more time between when we meet and the budget process to give us more space for that. So, consistent with that, but it's a good time to hold one because of these discussions. That sort of gives everybody a target date to shoot for. Sorry, Andrew.
That's okay. Just to let you know, with the adoption of the ordinance increasing age for possession of tobacco or tobacco-related products at 21, the health officer has contacted all retailers in town to let them know the change in the law. In addition, this law takes effect 30 days after adoption, or on March 8th. We're currently working with Newmarket Main Street Corporation to upgrade street signs in the historic district along Main Street. We're going to be replacing the poles at Elm, Central, Chapel, Church, and South Street with black three-inch poles with decorative bases. This will be an upgrade from the current galvanized U-rail poles. The total cost of the project's about $1,000, and the Newmarket Main Street's contributing roughly $675 of the cost, and I provided a sample of the base in the report so everyone can see what it looks like. Just to let everybody know, on Sunday night, I will be going to meet with the residents of Moody Point to discuss the upcoming town election and sort of give a state-of-the-town address, which I've been doing since I started here. And this year, though, I'm going to have the Director of Environmental Services attend with me to discuss the water system upgrade because it's going to impact their neighborhood, because it'll be, just one of the parts of it would be hooking up the Moody Point neighborhood to the system. So, just letting everybody know that, and that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
I just had a question, what's the history of meeting with the folks at Moody Point?
I've been invited since I've started here.
So they invite you?
They invite me, they have, they have like a listening session every, they're going to certain Sundays during the year, and right before the election, they want to get an update of what's going to be on the ballot, and I go and explain what's going on and give a, sort of, let through a question-and-answer period.
Okay, so that's at the initiative of the residents?
Yep, their association.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I just have a question about the street signs?
Sure.
So which street signs are there?
So it's basically, you know, the stop signs?
Okay, so it's the stop signs?
Right, where they have the U-rail versus, we're going to put black galvanized posts with a base on it to make it more attractive, to match sort of the...
Match the lampposts?
Yep.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
So, moving on to committee reports, are there any committee reports? Nope, okay. Resolutions in the second reading, this, the first one is 2018-19-24, administrative order by consent lamprey river sampling.
Need a motion?
The motion is...
Need a motion in a second, first?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-24.
Second.
Thanks for having me, this is pertaining to the wastewater treatment plant administrative order. We, as everyone knows, it's been a long run. We've agreed to do certain things for the higher limit of eight milligrams per liter at the wastewater treatment plant. Of that, we've built the wastewater treatment plant, we've done the total nitrogen control plan. This is the last piece of it. This is a sampling in the river to see what kind of changes could be happening in the river due to the construction of the wastewater treatment facility. It's a three-year sampling program. I worked with Wright Pierce to put together a comprehensive scope from the direction of the EPA. We advertised the scope, the bids, and we received two bids, one from Normandore Associates and one from UNH. UNH was the lowest bid, and being that it was a very complicated scope and bid process, I had Wright Pierce review the bids that came in with me, and the recommendation is to go with the University of New Hampshire to do the sample.
Just out of curiosity, if you were trying to see what the impact of the new plant is, wouldn't you have started the sampling before you...
We already have a baseline based on the DES study that was done back in '08 and '13, so we have the baseline.
We have that.
We need to go from the baseline on now.
Okay. And do you, will three years, do you think, be sufficient? We won't be condemned to do this forever, you think, or?
I really, to be honest, I couldn't answer that.
Okay.
We're trying to see if there's a trend of what's happening in the river. There is a large reduction in total nitrogen, as you know.
Right.
We reduced total nitrogen by 90% coming out of the wastewater treatment facility, which is about 60, actually about 54,000 pounds reduction in the year. So we could see it, but we have to go through this process.
Okay.
So ultimately, we have to do a, do a report in 2022, and we need this data.
Okay. Sure?
So...
Sorry, I forgot to talk.
That would be a three-year report then, by 2022?
Yes.
So I'd have to, okay, so I'd have to include this year, too, right?
This year, this will do, happen this summer, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Tony.
So, just to, and I'm probably just asking the same question again, and I apologize.
No problem.
But just to understand, right now, we're required to do this three-year study, three-year report. Do you anticipate that we will, that this will be a regular report that we have to do every three years? I mean, is it, is this going to be, do you think that this will be standard? I mean, not that, not that this impacts my decision right now for this study, I think that we need to do it, but I'm just curious what, how you project it.
I don't know. I don't think anybody knows because nobody's really done it.
Okay.
You know, we're out in front.
Right. Thank you. But this was tied to...
Yes.
The agreement?
Yes.
The specific three-year report?
Yes, yes.
So the reason you don't know is because that's all we're obligated to do right now?
Yes.
And the EPA could come back and say for another reason, for whatever reason, or do it some more?
We're hoping to have good numbers come back that show that the nitrogen is trending down. If the nitrogen is trending down, that gives us good reason to stay at the limit we're at.
Yeah. But we would continue to measure it, the other measurement that you mentioned earlier where we had reduced 90%? We can measure that?
We measure that, just what goes out of the plan.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yeah, that won't stop.
No.
Okay.
No other...
Yeah, you're supposed to go through first and then the second time for comments.
Okay. But nobody waiting to make a comment so we can call a roll, I think?
Well, I just have another question.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were waiting.
That's good.
We don't have the lights anymore.
We'll get them back, I'm going to need them.
I think so.
Yeah.
So, so this, these funds that we're obviously going to expend...
Yes.
And I'm asking you, like, as of, for any of our department heads, I think that you have always done everything that you can do to get grants and to kind of get the funds from other places, but at this point, like, we're going to shoulder that $147,000. There's no other...
And it's over three years, so it's not a one-time hit.
But there's no other monies that you can pull out of the air?
I don't have any right now, we're working on some right now, but nothing right now.
Okay. Thank you. Where, where do the funds come from, then?
The wastewater.
The wastewater, I'm sorry.
Wastewater budget.
Trying to check that.
Yep.
Okay, of the budget.
Yep.
No other comments, please call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Cass.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council YC.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And we move on to Resolution 2018-19-25, which is 2020 Elgin Pelican Street sweeper purchased. We need a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-25.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For this resolution, as well as the following resolution, they look very familiar because you already adopted one that looks almost exactly the same thing. However, upon, when you adopted the original resolution, did not have us actually withdrawing the funds from the capital reserve fund, so I have permission to purchase, but then have money to purchase it with. So these are just approving it with the money to purchase it.
Okay. Was that understood?
Mm-hmm.
Any comments?
No.
If not, it'd be difficult.
I, the only comment that I would make is that I appreciate that at our last meeting, it wasn't pushed, you know, to kind of push it through.
Yeah.
And so I just appreciate that, giving us the time to digest it as much as we, as much as we need to.
Coincidentally that you said that, because all department heads received an email from me today stating that we will not be pushing through resolutions like that. It's not fair to the council, it's not fair to the public, and it's not fair to the department heads because we want to make sure the information's correct. I will be explaining this a little bit later on, but there was an email that went to all department heads. We have definite timelines, only things can get on the agenda. It's noon on the Wednesday before the meeting. If it comes in at 12:30, Wendy knows to say no. So that's the rule.
Okey-dokey. Call the roll, please.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Cass.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 2018-19-26, a 2020 international dump truck with plow replacement. Could I have a motion in second, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-26.
Second.
And I suspect the comments are sort of like the same as the last time.
Ditto.
So, sure.
So I just noticed that the balance is going to only be 13, around 13K.
That's correct.
So, is this one of the things that are kind of moving into the operating budget?
This is one of the items that probably in the future, if we need to be able, if the council approves, we'll be leasing them versus buying them from capital reserve funds.
Okay.
This is, when we purchased, did this initially, I explained that, that it's sort of, we're growing up to have debt, because we should have debt, and this will be one of those areas that we would have it in. You know, we've discussed bonding roads and those other projects as well. But this is the first thing, we'll be moving things from contributing capital reserve funds to leasing vehicles. Um, but this is the first thing, we'll be, we'll be moving things from contributing capital reserve funds to leasing vehicles. Thanks.
Please call a roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Uh, and, uh, I, again, I have a motion second for resolution twenty eighteen nineteen dash twenty-seven relating to withdrawal of school impact fees.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen twenty nineteen dash twenty-seven.
Second.
You again?
Yep, um, we've received a request from the school district to withdraw two hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents from the school impact fees that we collect with new, um, uh, housing developments go in that we're allowed to collect for capital projects that are related to the increase in housing that we have. The current balance in said impact fee, uh, account is two hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents, so it'll be closing out this account and it's going to the, uh, renovations of the Newmarket Elementary School, which comply with the law for, um, capital of, uh, impact fees.
Any comments, questions?
I have a comment, just because I don't know that people understand how this process works and why, it's, it's, there are only really a few instances when the town kind of inserts itself into the, into the happenings of the school district, and this is one of those instances. And it's because we administer the impact fees, um, and s- and there have been cases in the past where the coun- you know, town council, the town council has disagreed with the use of impact fees, um, this seems to be a fairly straightforward use, um, and we don't really have a whole lot of say as a council, we, it's just whether we approve or, or don't approve the expenditure, is that safe to, is that?
Correct.
Right, so just for anybody listening at home, that's why we're doing this.
Okay, please call a roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, and, uh, I had to take a, uh, we have a motion in second, right, for
Yep.
library trustee appointment for, uh, Roderick Crepo?
Crepo.
Crepo, uh, term expiring March twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, a library trustee appointment of Roderick Crepo. Second.
Please call a roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And, uh, uh, motion and second for, uh, appointment to the consti- or reappointment to the conservation commission for, uh, Patrick Reynolds for a term that is to twenty twenty-two, I think.
I'll make a motion to appoint Patrick Reynolds to the conservation commission.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bo- Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Uh, once more, a, uh, motion in second to, uh, uh, appoint Connor Crowley to the, uh, ZBA for a term that ends in, uh, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to appoint Connor Crowley to the ZBA.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And lastly, I have a motion in second to appoint, uh, reappoint, I believe, again, uh, Chris Blackstone to the conservation commission, and again, this is a three-year term ending in twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chris Blackstone to the conservation commission.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And, uh, just comment that it's really a pleasure to, uh, be able to vote on four people stepping up to serve on important boards and commissioners in the town, so thank you very much to all the, uh, candidates that are, uh, that have stepped forward for another term or are stepping forward, appreciate it. And we move on to, you want, you have an attorney?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Resolution two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen dash twenty-eight deletes purchase interest on the municipal lease for energy improvements in town facilities. Whereas it's been determined that the municipal leases come with the interest cha- charges of four point two seven percent or five hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents over twenty-year period, and whereas the town administrator received approval of resolution two thousand eighteen nineteen dash seventeen for form energy upgrades to the town facilities. Now therefore be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town council recognizes the interest payments of five hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents on the municipal lease approved under resolution two thousand eighteen nineteen dash seventeen over the twenty-year period of, uh, lease. First reading February twentieth, two thousand nineteen. Excellent.
Sure.
Resolution two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen dash twenty-nine remending membership of the energy and environment advisory committee. Whereas it was determined that to better serve its purpose, the membership of the energy and environment advisory committee should be changed. Now therefore be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the membership of the committee shall be as follows, one member of the town council, six members at large, sponsored by Counsel Tony Weinstein.
Okay.
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, uh, two thousand eighteen nineteen dash thirty grants to reconstruct the Leverland Creek Crossing on Bay Road in Newmarket. Whereas the town in Newmarket has been working with the partnership of the nature conservancy on a project of mutual concern since two thousand fourteen to replace a thirty-six inch crushed corrugated metal culvert at Leverland Creek on Bay Road with a new sixteen-foot wide concrete box culvert. And whereas this project will achieve multiple benefits, including restoring aquatic connectivity within the ecosystem to allow fish, fish passage, enhancing the resiliency of Leverland Creek salt marsh, a significant environmental resource by removing old exist- existing tidal restrictions, and remediating a flood hazard at this crossing, which overstops, overtops the road during flood events and compromises public safety and water quality by contributing excess sediments and nutrients to the bay, to Great Bay. And whereas the town received two construction grants from the New Ham- New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services totaling two hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars to undertake this project in conjunction with the nature conservancy and the Newmarket Public Works Department, which will provide matching funds in the form of cash donated, donated labor and in-kind services to the project. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the council hereby approves this project and authorize the town administrator to sign the two grant agreements with the state of New Hampshire as follows, one, seventy-five thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars under the two hundred eighteen coastal resilience grant program and two, two hundred thousand dollars under the aquatic resource mitigation arm fund. Matching funds of this amount, in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars of non-federal cash and in-kind services will be, be provided by the town. First reading February twentieth, two thousand nineteen. And finally, resolution two thousand nineteen dash, eighteen dash nineteen dash thirty-one, town hall asbestos abatement and boiler removal. Whereas it's been determined that the original town hall heating plant contains asbestos and must be removed to allow for the installation of new heating plants. And whereas the town administrator received approv- approval for resolution two thousand eighteen nineteen dash seventeen to perform energy upgrades of the town facilities, and whereas the facilities director received competitive bids for asbestos abatement and removal. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the council authorizes the town administrator to enter to an agreement with Omni Environmental for abatement services of nineteen thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars at town hall and TerraCon Consultants, Inc. for two thousand five hundred dollars N T E abatement oversight at town hall utilizing Buildings and Grounds General Fund, first reading February twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
What does N T E stand for here?
I don't know, I'll find out.
Okay. Alrighty, and, uh, moving on, uh, is there any, uh, correspondence to the town council? I think some has already been referred to, they received, been referenced in the, uh, public forum. Uh, uh, closing comments by any of the town councillors?
Uh, election day, uh, Tuesday, March twelfth, so make sure to get out, if you're out of town, there's, uh, applications for, uh, absentee ballots. And then meet the candidates night, Tuesday the fifth of March.
Right. And just for anybody out there, there are, we've had some, one person present tonight with, uh, our, I guess, two people present tonight
Two.
that are running his write-ins and, uh, uh, I think it's, it's, it's great that we have a candidate's night, we didn't have one last year, I appreciate that we have it and it's a chance to, uh, to get out and see who's running and to have a conversation with them, um, it's always a little bit concerning when we didn't have people that were on the ballot, so this is a chance to, to, to make our democracy work. And.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Um, and I don't expect to have any discussion about it now, um, but I, I seem to recall last year, we did discuss a little bit about weed control. Um, and just wondering if we could circle back to that conversation.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're already doing that.
Great.
Yeah.
Put it out there.
Already been working on it.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to, you know, it's not gonna be an answer for the next meeting.
Right.
So.
Right, yeah.
It's gonna be before we spray, but we also have to do research on our end and it takes time.
Absolutely. Okay.
So.
Great.
Thank you.
So, to that point, I know that a lot, on a lot of things that we consider changing, um, we look to examples from other towns or areas. And there were some other towns mentioned.
Already looking.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to.
It, it's already been, it's been in the hopper before everything was already started.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Good.
Um, go, go ahead.
Oh.
Yeah, I just, I wanted right into the minutes my objection to the email discussion, formally right into the minutes to follow up on that.
Do you wanna, do you wanna state it now?
Well, it's, sure, per RSA ninety-one A, colon, two, paragraph two dash A, I am requesting my objection to that discussion, be right into the minutes.
Okay.
It's just, it's because of the fact that there was a conju- con- uh, communications back and forth, which is, could be.
Right to know.
Right.
Yes.
A violation of the right to know law.
Exactly. And I don't know if, I, I would encourage other councillors to, if you wanna raise your objection, you should do so now, too.
Good.
May I follow on that?
Sure.
I'm not going to raise an objection, um, obviously, we all read it, only one of us responded to it, say, um, Dale, I think you handled that very responsibly and you were very clear about the problem with consistently trying to email and start a group chain message, so I didn't have necessarily a problem with the way any of us handled it, um, but I will, uh, stand with Gretchen here in that it, it can be viewed as problematic, so.
I'm objecting to it under right to know.
Yeah, that I understand.
Right, it could be, it could be viewed under right to know and, and that's why we don't correspond in a group email that way.
Correct.
Right.
That's, I, why I didn't respond either, but, yeah, I, I, I'm glad that you did raise that objection because it was nice to have that documented as well.
Right. But as I stated at the beginning, in my understanding is that that makes that whole email chain a public document at this time, so.
Yeah, as soon as it, there's two ways it makes a public document, one, it went to the majority of the town council, and two, it went to me. So that's a public document, unless it was something, um, so, we don't resp- then, again, you can't have cont- contemporaneous communications between the council in an email because that's a violation of the right to know law, so, that's, if, if, if that started, I would have probably chimed in and said, guys, you can't do this, so, yeah.
Right. Challenge I had in that situation is people were making statements, you know, that verged on the personal nature and I to a group that was, uh, it was, uh, is a blind copy, I have no idea who's even receiving that email, so I've, I felt, um, I'm not, I'm a lo- I was always a little unclear on the legality of it, as I state, my, my, my sort of understanding that I've lived by and I've heard sort of conflicting on that is that it's primarily a matter that it becomes a public document, and I was willing to live with that, but I also felt, um, probably more than I needed to, but a little bit defensive in the, uh, in the way that, that communication went down, so, but your concerns are registered.
Couple of comments?
Sure, go ahead, please.
I think that the first thing I wanna is comment on this, and that's, I, I think just for the general community to be aware, it can be really challenging as a councillor when something is sent to us whether or not we should reply. And sometimes we're in a situation where you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't, and, uh, and we try not to reply all because then that can constitute meeting and, you know, we don't wanna get into that, um, a- at the same time, sometimes that causes people not to reply at all. And I know I've been guilty of that because I don't wanna be, I don't wanna reply, um, and so, uh, just so that when people send us uh, group emails, not replying doesn't mean that we haven't read it, it doesn't mean that we're not interested, um, but there is like that, that weird conundrum, um, that we don't wanna fall into, I think, as councillors. So, uh, it's a fine line sometimes that you have to walk, and I, um, understand.
Yeah.
How you replied and don't disagree with it.
And that's the problem in today's day and age, that everybody sends an email.
Right.
We're, they used to pick up the phone and call each councillor individually, which doesn't constitute a right, a violation, but emails, it goes to a majority of the board at once, we don't, we know that, and people will expect immediate response. And it just can't happen because of that.
Right.
So.
And sometimes you may reply to the person who sent it, I received it, uh, uh, but a- again, sometimes you don't reply at all just for that fear, so, um, I think
Right.
just so that people know that, so that was my first comment, my second comment is about the glyphosate, and it's something that I have brought up to the council, um, a, a couple of times before. And I just wanted to, um, I guess publicly state where I'm at with it all right now, it's something that I completely understand that the science isn't one hundred percent, and there are without a doubt differing views on, on the use of glyso- gly- glyphosate, um, but my take on it is if we know that there are safe alternatives, sa- or safer, why wouldn't we use them? Like, it's just sort, it's one of those things, like, we know that we, this thing might be dangerous or might not be, but we know that there are other things that definitely aren't dangerous, so it just seems like a no-brainer to me that we would use those things that are not dangerous. And I know that in some situations, they may be more expensive, um, I personally, I, and again, we don't have a say in those in those day-to-day operations necessarily, but, um, personally, I think that for the health and safety of the community, um, I, I don't feel uncomfortable saying that I would pony up those extra dollars and, and support that expenditure, um. So there's that, but then I was also on the, just to respond to a question that was asked, um, of, of me via email is some specifics about where exactly it's, that's used? Uh, like, is it just used on public sidewalks, is it used on fields, is it, and so people were, which is, I, I think that was the, the answer that we had gotten that one, but I thought I would, um, bring that up again because that was requested. Thank you.
And just to really quickly add, I, I feel the same way as the, the last comments were mentioned, um, if we can move away from it, um, I would like to and I've expressed that, um, to our administrator, um, I know Dover went through a similar process last year where they passed a resolution to move away from it, and last year they were actually, when they got the proposal, it was too cost prohibitive, I think the market is coming around on that, so if we can find, uh, alternatives that are safer and, and reasonably, uh, reasonable cost, I would like to get there as soon as possible.
So what is the process of?
What do you have for?
I gotta, I gotta get a price. Is it?
And sadly, we're not quite in that season where we have to be worrying about weeds, but it's good to be proactive. I'd be happier if we were, if the, you know, we were a little closer to spring, um.
But we're not.
Yeah, but it's good to be prepared.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll just comment, I, I think there's a possibility and a opportunity for the wishes of some of the ci- citizens being expressed in public comments and our cor- correspondent to come together with, you know, a good solution, so thank the town administrator for looking into it in his departments, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Seeing any, no other comments, I think we stand adjourned.
Yep, you can turn us off. Yep, you can turn us off. Thanks.